Better control of the timeliness and cost of this project. They are purchasing equipment themselves, so it's coming out of the Food Services account, not through the school budget, at the estimated cost of $30,000. The demolition and installation of this equipment is expected to cost about $40,000. If approved, they are proposing the procurement schedule for this project that's been opening for April 15th, tentatively, of course, due to these days. Again, upon approval of this, funds are coming from the Food Services Enterprise account and not through the school budget.
Mr. Sousa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brenda, if you have a question on the Bennett situation?
Okay.
So, explain to me what alto pro-god wall covering, is that supposed to be, it's in the kitchen, but we did a lot of work, we did a lot of work there last summer when we had the vents and all of the kitchen area, and I think the stove area was redone. How come, is this a different area? And how come it wasn't done at the same time? From cost reasons or?
Correct. So what happens is Mrs. Tappel will go ahead and she'll, she'll look to see what is the pressing thing to be done in the kitchen. So, of course, she doesn't want to escalate the amount of money. So that is why she did it in two sections. So this is, the one that we did last summer with more of the serving lines and all of this, this is a totally different part of the kitchen.
Yeah, and this is, I'm assuming this is upgraded walls for sanitary reasons and things like that?
Correct.
Because it's probably the same walls that have been there for a long time.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm all set with that.
Do I hear a?
A motion to approve the bid to go out for the Bennett Kitchen and the Friedman Kitchen as presented.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, so voted. Next item on the agenda is bills payable in the amount of $1,083,859.60.
I reviewed the warrant. I don't see anything unusual. I'd move it to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Christine's got a, Christine's got a question.
Yeah, I just wanna, I, I'm gonna vote on, on the thing, but I, I just want to be excused from invoice number 16958.
During the regular meeting, Christine.
Oh, that's for the reg, I'm sorry, Joe. I was, lost it. I'm not used, I'm usually don't sit in on these, sorry.
Have some popcorn.
Yeah.
So again, motion has been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Roof, so voted.
With all due respect, I just want to confirm one thing, please. Are we recording this, Mr. Cabral?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure. Thank you.
Do we have anything else for the Finance and Law Subcommittee this evening? Any report from Brenda on the school update or?
Well, facilities, when we do our EMOC, what, okay?
Okay. All right, so a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
No, still voted, so we're adjourned.
Call the meeting to order.
Pursuant to the Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this public meeting of the Taunton School Committee of the City of Taunton is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but the public, but recording of this meeting will be available after the fact on the Tom Public Schools website and posted. Go ahead, Madam Mayor.
Roll call, please, Mrs. Fagan.
I want to try to remember where everybody sits. Ms. Dougherty? Is she there?
Yeah.
Let's see what's wrong here.
I also, also. Unmute, Carol, unmute.
Present.
Mr. Palowski, he's not there yet.
I'm present. I'm here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. There. Um, let's see, who's next? Mr. Fiore. Mr. Martin. Mrs. Almeida.
Present.
Mr. DeMello.
Present.
Mrs. Fagan's present. Chairman Sousa.
Present.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Present.
Did I miss anybody?
I don't think so.
Okay.
There's no public input, so we will go to the Superintendent's update.
Thank you. I thought we'd use this time just to review you, or review with you, our EMOC protocol that we've been utilizing to keep us focused and centered on addressing COVID-19. So I'll have Mr. Barata review what we've been doing regarding educational planning. And we'll talk about what we do for meals, we'll cover operation, communication, and compensation. So Chris, you mind just walking us through real quick?
Sure.
Everything we've done today and where we are as of today?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. First of all, it definitely takes a total team effort, Tom Public Schools, to pull this off. We were able to create a pretty in-depth webpage by Carolyn Blinow, pulling resources from not only what she grabbed, but also from what our academic coordinators have done, mostly Tina Rogers, Elizabeth Palowski, Becky Coet, Delilah Mendoza, along with the curriculum supervisors at the high school, and Kristen Keenan, Assistant, or Associate Headmaster up here. The leadership team has been unbelievable in supporting this endeavor to get out packets of work for students in grades K through four, and also preparing for the digital learning opportunities for grades 5 through 12. Kathy Perry will go into more detail about how she pulled together some extra hands to push the information out and deliver the packets across the district. I'm sitting in front of our Taunton High School Printing Center, where Betty Korea right now is finishing up on tomorrow's packets. Electronically speaking, or digitally speaking, Carolyn, Carolyn Blinow, along with her team up here, not only assembled or took apart the Chromebook cards for distribution tomorrow, but also with the hotspots that Superintendent Cabral with Carolyn Blinow purchased for the district, had a whole host of teachers up here from Taunton High School, from the elementary levels, all helping out middle school as well, getting the SIMs cards ready, set up for the hotspots. So we're in halfway decent shape. Obviously, it's not perfect trying to kick out all these packets and such and keep the information flowing, but we did a pretty good job today. Kids were extremely excited. Kathy Perry and I went out and visited Paul Bunker and Hopewell. Parents were very much appreciative of the, the hard work that all the teachers and everybody did with compiling the packets. And most importantly, this, today's distribution of packet was compliments of Hopewell interrogating with her teachers pulling together at least the initial packet to go out. So that concludes, John, very quickly, my report anyways.
Thank, thank you, Chris. Again, great work doing there, by Chris and the team. The next piece is meals. Yesterday, we put the plan into action. And Kathy, you want to talk a bit about meals real quick? Just give a quick snapshot on how the meals are flowing, Kath?
Sure. So we have seven locations that we're providing meals, four schools, and three off-campus sites. So Highland Hills, Paul Bunker, and Bristol Commons, all are having, today we started with breakfast. Initially, we just did lunch. Today, we started with breakfast and lunch. And then the four schools are Parker, Martin, Mulcahy, and Hopewell. And so we've had a pretty steady flow. I would say we've had over 50 people at each site for meals. So that's been really, really great. The families have been incredibly appreciative. We actually, today, over at Mulcahy, set up cones because we want to be very cautious of the social distancing. So we set up cones for people to kind of line up at, and then they would just kind of grab and go with their meals. So we've, we've been very careful about that, but they've been super appreciative. So that's worked out well. Today, we had our SROs and our community facilitators at all seven sites. So that was excellent. They were able to help, they were able to answer questions that families had, in addition to, as Mr. Barata said, passing out the packets. We wanted to just explain to the families that they can certainly do a combination of online work and the paper and pencil at the elementary level. And so, so far, so good. We're, we're looking to try to even streamline that process, possibly next week, but for now, we're, we're in a really good spot with it. And a huge shout out to Karen Pepper and her staff. They have been really, really amazing. So, so far, so good with the meals and the distribution of it.
If I could just add, we also added Old Colony Y and C. We pressed to provide them with additional meals. I reached out to Superintendent Margulies at BP, their students can participate. Bristol Laggie, have you reached out to their superintendent, said the same thing to them? And also reached out to the Diocese of Forward, and then Steve Perlo, to let them know that any students in parochial schools who, for some reason, may need food, they can access the sites as well. So it's really become a community effort, support all our students. So thank you, Kathy. Next up is operations with Brenda. Real quick, Brenda, quick overview on operations?
Sure. Custodians are, we have many of the schools bring their second shift custodians to the first shift, so they can do team cleaning. Classrooms are going into deep cleaning. You'll see custodians cleaning off desks, chairs, floors, walls, all the touch, common touch spots with doorknobs and all of that. So custodians are working very, very hard disinfecting all of our schools. We even have the groundskeepers join. They took all of the big, large trash barrels that are in each of the schools, and they went ahead and they washed them through, they power washed every single one, and bringing them back to the schools as well. So custodians are working very hard disinfecting and cleaning our schools. And then, as Mrs. Perry did say, we have four schools that are doing food prep. So we have those four schools, after they are done, after they leave, we will have our team, our storekeepers, will go into those four locations and disinfect again the cafeteria area. So the cafeteria workers will go into a clean, disinfected environment when they go back in the next day to prep the food for our kids. In addition to that, too, we do disinfect the trucks every day that are going out into the community to serve the food. So we are, we are trying to do our best in keeping all of our staff and, of course, our students safe as well.
And then as far as another piece regarding operations, I just want to point out, tomorrow's going to be another stress day for us, as we start deploying the Chromebooks. So today was a little bit of a stress test. If you're familiar in the restaurant business, when they open it up, so tomorrow, we anticipate there may be some hiccups, but again, we'll adapt, we'll go with the flow, and we'll figure it out on the fly. And then regarding communication, we're trying to keep things really, really tight and controlled. One thing that we noticed today was that we love our PTOs, and we love our community organizations that want to get information out, but what we noticed was their messages were a little different than what we were communicating. So as part of our planning, what we're learning is that when we put together our communication plan, we need to incorporate parent leaders in the community to make sure that their messaging is consistent with ours. So that's something that we didn't anticipate, that we'll adjust.
Well, we just lost, we just lost, we just lost the mayor, so I had a question, so now on the chair, so I'll just ask my question. John, I think it's good for all of us to, to think about how the message is going to get out there. I know there's a lot of social media things going out there, and people that are on social media, but I think the best thing to do is refer anyone to the TPS website and any official, official documents that John has, that John's letting out. I think that's the best way to do it. I know that, I've thought about posting a lot of things on my Facebook, but I think the best thing to do is report it, in this particular case, because it's so, it changes so much and it's so volatile. The mayor's computer just crashed, so we'll have to see if she comes back on or not. So that's just a thought, because it changes so quick. Nathan, go ahead. Carol, you're next.
Thanks, Mr. Chairperson. Yeah, so on the communication, I 100% agree. So there's only a couple of comments I would make about the website. So number one, the website's been spectacular. I especially like the, the platform about all the coronavirus updates, EMOC, all the stuff that we're doing. There's one thing that I would request if we could update. So when you go to the website, and we get the nice orange banner, and at the top, we've got the coronavirus platform, directly underneath is a link that still takes us to the update from March 11th. I was wondering if we could change that link to simply take us to a page that has all of the communications that Superintendent Cabral has sent out, in order from, you know, the most recent up, up at the top, because then there'd be a nice, comprehensive, easy place to go where everybody can read everything. Because I found, as a parent myself, I've found it a little bit difficult to get, keep track of all the different communications that are coming through. But I think if we all just, if we all just direct people to the website and everything's there, I can say that that would be, that would be helpful.
Yeah, especially if they're kind of like in line item form from chronological order, in reverse chronological order, current first, then they can go back. Carol was next, and then I'm going to turn it back to the mayor to chat. Carol, then Greg. Go ahead, Carol.
Thank you. To the superintendent, so the distribution of the packets, are we just distributing them at the meal distribution sites, or are they somehow getting to all of our students? How are we doing it? Is that stuff posted online, for example?
Yes, actually, what was posted today, which I'll email to you later, it's on our website, on the communications, it was a schedule. So we have a schedule that we posted on the website, and I believe it was either this morning's communications or yesterday. The days are all blending, so I apologize. But we did put this schedule on our website, and we will make sure that people know that where the packets will be located. We did put a small number of packets at each school in the event parents show up to the schools, and we also will be creating a link, we're going to work with Carolyn to create a link to the packets online, in case parents want to print off stuff from home if they have that access.
So the vast majority of children will have access somehow to that information?
Correct.
Okay. I have a, two more questions, real quick. So the Chromebooks, obviously, are being distributed to households where there is no access to computers. So are we, I mean, I'm assuming that we're insured, so that those Chromebooks will come back to us at some point?
We are making sure that the kids are signing, are signing out a form, so we know who it's been assigned to, so we know who to track them back from. So yes, we will make sure that we get them back, and then we'll check with our coverage to make sure. But right now, coverage was not my concern. My main concern is making sure that we get the Chromebooks to our kids. If for some reason we lose it, or they don't come back, we'll try to write it off as an expense with FEMA.
And my last question has to do with the, so the schedule says that the breakfast is distributed first thing in the morning, 8 o'clock, or somewhere thereabouts, and then lunch, at lunchtime, from 11:30 to 12:30, or whatever it is. Is it possible? I'm thinking of parents who may find it difficult, like taking, taking a taxi to the location. Is it possible to serve the breakfast and the lunch together? I mean, I know they're made at different times, I guess. Have you thought about that?
During our, during our leadership meeting, that was something that we discussed for two reasons. One, to limit social, to help with social distancing. So if we have one pickup, grab a breakfast bag, grab a lunch bag, we're actually limiting the number of times people come out. So that was something that we learned, and that we'll adjust. And we may be also adjusting our lunch delivery schedule to be more like a brunch schedule from 10 to 12. And then the other thing I wanted to mention, too, is once we get through the stress test of getting our Chromebooks out to the high school and middle school students, we anticipate we'll have some extra. Then we'll start seeing, we'll start identifying elementary school students who need them, and we'll get them into their hands as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Greg, go ahead.
Thank you, through you, Madam Mayor. The only, the only feedback I've been getting is that the messages that are getting out there, sometimes we have too many references to the NPH, CDC, and all these different organizations that are out there. I think if the message is simplified and to the point, you know, food distribution, ABC, and Chromebooks, XYZ, I think that's easier on everybody. That's the only feedback I've been getting from a lot of people that have been reaching out to me. Messages are great, sometimes too much of a message is sometimes not as helpful. That's my only.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. I'm going to turn this back over to the mayor, because she could, I just have one question myself. I don't see any other hands. I had a parent reach out to me and ask me, she couldn't get a ride to Friedman for whatever it was today. And so I just told her, call the school, leave a message, and they'll get back to you when they can tell her what time you're available, and they'll get back to you.
Right.
Is that, is that reasonable?
Correct. Or they can call my office.
Call your office, okay. I'm going to turn the Madam Mayor's mic back on, John. Is that, is that, is that you, is that Shawna? Oh, there it is. Go ahead, Madam Mayor, you can control the meeting now.
Okay, thank you. So that concludes the Superintendent's update.
The only last piece was compensation. We're making sure everyone gets paid. That's the, just want to let everyone know, we're making sure that everyone continues to be compensated.
So, so, Madam Mayor, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, and I know what, everyone gets paid on 180 cycle, and we're working on getting everybody paid. Is that including the crossing guards?
I believe we included the crossing guards, yeah. We, we.
There was a question on that, and obviously, all the, all the units are getting paid, all the six, six unions are getting paid.
Six unions, individual contracts, all the employees, we're making sure everyone is covered for their regular day pay. Extra details, that's not part of your regular pay. So if you, if you are working six hours, seven hours a day, that's your, that's what we budget you for, that's what we are paying you for.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So we will move on to Subcommittee reports. Finance and Law Subcommittee, Mr. Martin.
Finance and Law Subcommittee met earlier this evening remotely, obviously. And in attendance were Mr. Fiore, Mr. Sousa, myself, Superintendent Cabral, and Assistant Superintendent Monahan. We had three items on the agenda for this evening. First item, student activity requests, there weren't any. Second item was a request from the Food Services to bid Bennett School and Friedman School kitchens, and that motion, motion was made to approve the bid specs to go out, and tentatively, tentatively being opened on Wednesday, April 15th, but that's subject to, you know, what happened, with, with, with what's going on. And then third, last item on the agenda was bills payable in the amount of $1,083,859.60. And again, that motion was made and approved to pay those bills. And that's the report of the Finance and Law Subcommittee.
Thank you. Do we need a motion to approve that, or?
I'll do that, Shawna. Motion, motion to approve the Finance and Law Subcommittee report and adopt the recommendations.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Wait a minute. Question.
Christine and Greg, Christine and Greg are gonna, are gonna have to.
Carol has a question.
Oh.
Two.
I'm sorry, Greg. Let Carol go first.
Okay, Mrs. Dougherty.
Thank you. On page 13 on the bills, there's Susan Looney, professional development payment for $10,800. It's a pretty hefty sum for PD. Could you tell me what that is?
Yeah, I'd be glad to. So Susan Looney is one of our professional development providers that's helping schools that are in the promising practices. We have four schools in promising practices, and part of the money that they receive from the state, from the state, is being utilized to provide professional development at those schools.
So that's from a grant, right?
Yeah.
From that grant, yes.
Yes.
Second question, Madam Chair, if I might, page 19, the Reed's Collaborative. So how often do we pay them? This is a substantial sum. Do we pay them quarterly?
Quarterly.
Half-year, annually? How does that?
That's, that's a combination of second and third quarter tuitions.
I'm sorry, say again, please.
If you guys mute your mics, it'll be easier to hear me. It's a combination of second quarter and third quarter tuitions.
So how often, how, what's the total, so do you know what the total amount of money we pay them on an annual basis is?
With the year?
Yeah.
It's in the millions. We pay them, between them and South Coast, again, we've, between them and South Coast, it's in the millions.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Chris?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan?
Yes, I have on invoice number 16958, on page seven, in the amount of $402.44. I'd just like to be voted as present on that vote, and I'll vote for everything else. Thank you.
I'll make, I'll make that part of my motion.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes. I'd forgotten during the committee meeting that there's an invoice from the Old Colony History Museum on the warrant, so I want to be recorded as present on that, because I'm an officer.
Part of my motion.
Okay, all right. So, anyone else? Okay, there's a motion made.
Greg, Greg, Greg.
Okay. I can't see any hands, so, I'm sorry, Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mayor. I respectfully ask to vote present on page 11, voucher number 13546, in the amount of $29,100, and on page 19, voucher number 13541, in the amount of $5,959.
Thank you.
Part of my motion. And just one thing for the record, Wendy, did you get all of that?
Yes, I did.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Go ahead.
Okay, so there was a motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? So voted. Next is entry Subcommittee report, Mr. Palowski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So my apologies, I attended the meetings and I took copious notes, but I haven't had time to transcribe them into a way that would do them justice, so I'll give a full report at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Palowski.
So question, to Mr. Palowski. Should we entertain, did you entertain a motion to adopt or accept the school improvement plan for both of the schools, Letty and, where, East Tonon?
Yep, so we made a motion at the East Tonon Elementary to adopt and accept their school improvement plan, but we did not do so at the Letty meeting, because we did not have a quorum by the end of the meeting.
Would it be appropriate to do that now?
Um.
I should say, I believe it would be appropriate to do that now, yeah.
Okay, so shall I officially do the motion for both?
You can't make the motion, can you?
Yes. We could do it from the floor. I think it'd be for him to do it from the floor for both.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to adopt and accept the school improvement plans for East Tonon Elementary and Letty Elementary School as provided on March 11th, 2020.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? So voted. New business. Note, Mr. Palowski?
So, yeah, so I guess new business, I'm hoping this is the opportunity, opportune time for me to ask some of the questions that I had. I apologize, I probably should have asked this during the earlier Superintendent's report, but regarding all that's going on with, with school closures. So my, my concern, so we are doing a spectacular job of communicating to everybody through emails and on the website, but my concern is, how are we ensuring that we're communicating to the students and families that don't have any access to the internet? I know that we're making plans to get Chromebooks and hotspots, but how do we get the communication to those folks in the first place?
So in one of my letters that you're going to get tonight when we end this meeting, you're going to see the communication portion that I sent to the TEA. I see David's hand up.
No, go ahead, John. I'm signaling the mayor for me, they want, I'm going to question this after what Nathan's talking about.
Yeah, we have, we, I think we have a pretty good idea, a pretty good solution for that, Nathan. So what we're gonna do is I spoke with the TEA leadership, Janet Anderson and James Creighton. We're asking all our teachers to contact their students. So elementary stu-, elementary teachers, they're gonna reach out to all the kids in their class. Our middle school teachers are gonna reach out to their homeroom students. Our high school and alternative high school stu-, teachers are gonna check in with their A block and first period students. We are creating an email for our teachers called wecare@tauntonschools.org. This is for teachers only. The wecare@tauntonschools.org, teachers will be checking with the kids and asking them three simple questions. Do you have enough food? Do you have access to the curriculum, paper or online? If they identify a need, they're gonna use that email, it's gonna go to Chris Barata and Kathy Perry. And then from there, we'll make arrangements to make sure those families get it. So we anticipate it's probably gonna be one, three percent of the population that would be, that might slip through the cracks. So that's how we think, or we believe we'll be able to catch them using the TEA as a kind of like a grassroots approach to make those connections by phone or whatever approved communication platform we've recommended. What I have told teachers to do is please do not communicate with kids individually. If you're gonna communicate with a student, make sure there's someone else on that chain because we don't want to create any issues. I mean, I think I've dealt with enough personnel issues with you all that we don't need to rehash them, right?
Okay, Mr. Sousa, did you have a comment or question?
Yeah, I did, Madam Mayor. I did, Madam Mayor. Thank you. On the same subject and, uh, that's just, it's just fantastic. I mean, it's, you, you're thinking of things and, uh, uh, everything's, everything's flowing well and all new, all kinds of new, new stuff. Uh, my, my question is this, like I said before, so I told the parent, call the school. Are the principals, um, able to get their, get their, uh, voicemail remotely so they, the case is a problem? I have a parent call the school, they can get their voicemail?
Yeah, so one of the things we've, I, I like what Shauna did during her meeting today and I want to thank the mayor for allowing me to participate in that eleven o'clock meeting daily. So some of the guidance that they're using today regarding, we want our staff who are working remotely, frequently, constantly checking their email. And we've also talked to Carolyn and IT about pushing the calls to their cell phones or their, uh, personal phones so that they can access their phone calls. So the schools that have VoIP, I believe that's easier to do. I'm not sure about the schools that don't have VoIP. So I'd have, that can't be done. So.
Yeah.
Folks to check their email. We created a general answer machine statement for all our schools saying that if you call this number, uh, that building's not in session. If you have a question, email the principal or call the following number. So we, we try to cover that with a generic answer machine statement on all our school phones.
Would it be prudent to put an email bla-, I mean, excuse me, a text message blast out? Uh, not a text message, a, a robo-call and saying if you, this is just a check on, uh, you and your family. If you have any problems, call your school principal, um, and, uh, leave it on the, leave a voicemail. Um, or you think that's too overwhelming?
Yeah, let's see how the reach out from the TEA comes, uh, works out because again, I think that personal connection would be good for the kids.
Yeah.
You know, people are probably sick of hearing my calls that they might not be answering them, so. Well, let's see how it goes when we, when we canvass the community with our TEA, uh, with our six hundred teachers.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. DeMello, did, did I miss you? Did you have a question? No, okay.
No, Mayor, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, uh, Mrs. Doherty, do you have a question?
Uh, yes, I do, thank you, um, Madam Mayor. I have a question. I heard you very carefully outline how you're communicating with a whole wide variety of children in their different circumstances. I just want to double-check on reaching homeless children. We obviously transport those children, so we know where they are, but we also able to reach those families as well.
Uh, Kathy, do you wanna talk about the reach out that you did, Kathy?
Sure, so, um... So a lot of those families that you're, that you're referring to are part of our robo-call. They are part, they do get our emails. Um, and so I am working with our SROs and our community facilitators as well. And so when those families, I've actually already heard from a few families, um, that have requested some particular needs and I'm already working together with the Family Resource Center on Main Street as well as the resources that we have at Taunton Public to meet those needs. So, um, I've also talked to our representative Sarah Slaughterback at the state level. And, um, cause that actually, Mrs. Doherty, was my main concern when this whole thing started happening. Um, was that population. And so I've been, um, very vigilant in reaching out particularly to that population and making sure that they have what they need.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, looks like, uh, Mrs. Doherty, are you all set?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Palowski?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. So yeah, my apologies. So I have three more questions. Um, so, so first, uh, Mr. Cabral, thank you very much. Your answer was exactly what I was looking for. And my wife's actually in the background getting teared up because this is what she writes all of her papers about in, uh, her, her graduate program. Um, so I think maintaining that tight community of the teachers with their students is, is the best thing. And I think it, it kinda shares the burden of making sure everyone's connected with. So the idea of each individual teacher reaching out to their small community of kids, making sure they're okay, uh, that's great. And that, that makes me feel good about knowing that the people who aren't gonna get the email blast and see the things on the website, they'll, they'll get touched. So thank you so much for that. Um, so my questions, um, number one regarding the packets for elementary students. Um, I've been fielding some questions from parents. Um, so I, I know that our focus is getting Chromebooks and whatnot out to the, to the high school and the middle school. The packets for the elementary, are, are the packets completely, uh, inclusive? Or, or is there different stuff online than that would be in the physical paper and pencil packets?
I'll, I'll defer to Mr. Barata on that one. Chris?
This is why we sort of, we kept it under the label of enrichment, Nathan. What we tried to do and what we put out is saying, hey, look, we wanna be as inclusive as possible with the packets. Uh, we broke it up by grade level. We actually thinned out some of the material going out to try to make it as accessible as possible. This is a concern that Desi expressed, uh, very clearly, is that when you, when you put out material as if it's a regular school day and it's not accommodated for, you're basically excluding students from that. So this initial packet was try to be as inclusive as possible, whether there's drawing activities, cutting activities, grammar lessons, trying to do the best we can to do that. The online resources are a little bit more diverse. Uh, we're gonna get to probably within the, by the end of the week, the Desi is gonna send us a clearinghouse materials that's gonna be accessible to all types of populations. I know they've branched out and connected with WGBH to try to close caption some of their programming in educational and different languages. So they're actually, uh, have a much more robust system to try to adapt a lot of the materials they're gonna push out as being more accessible to, to everyone. I know Delilah Mendoza has been working with her EL communities, uh, connecting with local agencies and such and trying to find sites that'll also accommodate those, uh, multilingual students. So we're actually doing the best we can right now, Nathan, and I'm sure as, as time goes on, we're gonna have access to a lot more materials.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Barata. Um, so sorry, two more questions. Um, and, uh, and most of these questions are coming from what I'm getting from parents or, or reading on Facebook. Um, and this kinda goes along with wanting to make sure that we've got, um, consistent, accurate information going out there um, to combat a lot of misinformation that's out there. Um, so, um, if a decision is made to keep schools closed past the April sixth date that was currently mandated by the state, when would you think would be the latest that we would be informing, uh, the community of, of such an extension of closed schools?
As soon as we, as soon as we learn, we will update the entire community, just like we did, um, well, on, on Friday, when we got the, when we started noticing that everybody was closing around us and things were escalating at a rapid rate, we changed, uh, our practice and went to a closure. So I'm not gonna wait. As soon as we learn that there's a closure or an extension, we'll close. I mean, I'll make that, that's, yeah, that's, that's, that's an easy one. Thank you.
Okay, perfect, perfect. That's, that's what I believe to be true. I just wanna make sure that that's, that's out there for people. Um, and then just my final question, and I guess this is just, um, a question on accountability. So we're doing, uh, extraordinary efforts cleaning, sanitizing all the buildings while the kids aren't there. Um, I just wanna know, like, how are we, um, how are we sort of like auditing that work and checking it out and making sure that everything's done? Uh, you know, making sure that all the bathrooms and whatnot are stocked with soap and paper towels so that when everyone comes back, everything's ready to go?
Yeah, so, uh, we have our groundskeepers and we have our storekeepers who've been going around and checking on our schools as well as Mrs. Monahan. We also, um, we're, I'm strongly considering deactivating everyone's fob, who's not an essential employee, so that staff are not going into our schools. So what we noticed today, for example, was some teachers and their kids were at E-Pole, which kinda, you know, defeats the purpose of why we're cleaning and sanitizing our buildings. So we reached out to the union and told them that we wanna really limit staff coming into the school. So, uh, the next step may be to deactivate the fobs. So that way they really get the message so that when you do come back, Nathan, that the team's clean. And then the other concern, and again, I believe everyone is kind-hearted and everyone's good natured. I don't wanna see our supplies start disappearing as well.
Perfect, thank you very much. That, that answers my questions.
Okay, uh, any other new business? We will, I'm sorry, do you have a question?
majority of them, I think, waiting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I, I know in a time like this, we have the, the educational channel. Do you think it would be wise to use that to give information out to people on our educational channel?
Yeah.
Also, the other thing I was thinking of, I noticed that, um, Mr. Cabral, and I also noticed that Barry Sanders from the council were, uh, reading stories to young students on, uh, Facebook. Maybe that might be something that the people can tune, tune into the educational channel and have stories read to the young students. Or maybe there could be an arts and craft project that the kids could do from little things that they have around the home. Those kinds of things, just to keep them occupied.
So Mr., Mr., Mr. Jake's got a promotion this week. So Mr. Jake was, was added to our operations team. So he's gonna be assisting with the social media piece. And then obviously Steve, whatever we do on social media, if you could replicate on Channel Ten, that would be great. And then Steve and I videoed some PSAs today, some public service announcements that he'll start airing. Steve, if it's appropriate to put it on Channel Ten with the format, then put them on Channel Ten as well. The last piece I wanna say to Carolyn about is as our teachers start creating all these fun activities and letting the kid, and as a way to connect with the kids, I wanna create a page on our website that will house all these videos. So in addition to having them on social media, we'll have them on a link on our website and then we'll work with Jake to get it on Channel Ten. Right, Steve?
Yep, and I'll have some stuff out later this evening as well. And, uh, I'm also just to answer that question about social media, I'm trying to answer the Facebook questions as they've come up. And I know people have been very appreciative, they've been messaging the page and I've been replying to them, um, when possible. They appreciate the immediate response or the, the one-on-one response when.
Yeah. I, um...
Reaching out to like Food Services, Karen Papa answered some questions and Special Education, Amy Monahan answered some specific questions. So, uh, I'll continue to do that moving forward.
That, thanks, Steve. The mayor's computer crashed again. I think, I think, I don't know if you were here for what I said before, but, um, I think also too is direct them to the website, to the official, uh, docu-, documents of John. That's what we're gonna try to, all of us are gonna try to do because that way the message is, is, um, consistent. But certainly the, the one-on-one is also, is also good enough. Some people have the simple questions. And then just be careful, some people wanna argue with you, so don't get involved in that. Um, I see Ca-, I see you, Carol. I'll, so, uh, John, are you all set for a second? I'm gonna, I'm gonna give it to Ca-, Carol.
Yeah, uh, thank you, David. I just took a question about IEP. Someone called me a little distressed to say that they had heard that IEP meetings would not go forward, that they would be canceled. And so the question was, has the Department of Education issued an edict to say they would be canceled? And what do we do about the deadlines and the services that need to be, well, kids aren't in school? So perhaps that's a rhetorical question, but talk a little bit about that, please, John.
I can't get into detail into all the.
Well, as much detail as you can give.
I can't get into a lot of detail on special education specifics, but the letter that we put on our website, I believe it was either yesterday or today, uh, comes from a conference call and from directors, was from Desi, uh, Rob Johnstone, I believe is his name, Russ Johnstone, that has all the guidelines and all the guidance that Desi has all regarding special needs students in district and special needs students out of district. So, uh, they, they put a lot of information, a lot of thought into, uh, how this is working out. If they go on the website, they can find it there. So again, the more, I think David's recommended, the more we can direct people to the website. A lot of the, a lot of the answers to the questions are there. We also will be uploading a FAQ document probably tonight, if not tomorrow, or frequently asked questions that will have a lot of the guidance that we're getting from Desi embedded in it to answer those questions.
It might be, well, if, if it's appropriate to put a link somewhere on our website so that people, cause I went to look myself to see if I could find any more information and I couldn't locate any. So being able to go right to the source, in this case, Special Education Department, probably would be useful to people who have those questions. Yeah, could you do that, John?
I said yes.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
He said yes.
I said yeah.
Yeah, now I get it. They both, you both said yes. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol. Christine? Uh, Christine's microphones are off.
I just, I just unmuted. Oh, God, it's unmuted, right?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, listen, I, I just wanna say, for those of you that are using those background pictures, I don't know what it is, you talk and, and it looks like your head's sliding around on your body and your hair and everything. It's kinda weird.
Yeah, like that, Nate.
Yeah, I, I, all of you all, all of you that are there, like Nate's head looked like it was sliced off at a side. I, it's just kinda very distracting to watch that, cause I don't know if you're all having a meltdown, cause that's what it looks like. But just to let you know, I don't think that that enhances the, um, the thing, you know what I mean? I think you're better off with just your home behind you. But you can do what you want, I'm just.
Oh, that's better, Nate.
Oh, my God.
And if I can go back to Carol's question too, we, I should have mentioned this too, Carol, that we did meet as a leadership team. We spoke up with Judy, who was Judy Moore Rooney, uh, Special Education Director was there. And part of the conversation that we had was to stress that, uh, out of district, Special Education Director reach out to his families as well as our special educators, reach out to their families too.
Yes, and you did send that copy of that letter, or I saw a copy of that letter on, on the, online somewhere. Thank you, John.
Thank you. Um, that, we, I think we're still on the new business. We actually reverted back to talking about, uh, superintendent's update. So I think now we're gonna move on to unfinished business. And the unfinished business is the Taunton Public Schools Student Opportunity Plan. Superintendent Cabral?
I have my red pen. Tell me what page we need to go to to make edits or questions.
Anyone have any comments on the, on the pack, on the, uh, Mrs. Almeida?
Um, I read this plan and it, it seems very good. It's, it's everything that we have stated that we wanted to do. And I think that everyone that worked on it did a great job. And I would make a motion that we accept the plan as is and send to the department.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Carol. On discussion, Carol?
Um, so I, I have a couple of questions. I, one of them is that I note that the plan, so it's a, is this a three-year plan or a five-year plan?
This is a three-year plan. Desi only wants to submit year one.
So there are recommendations for many, many new staff positions to support the new programs. So an internship coordinator, pathways director, and under the bridge program, unnumbered behavioral assistants, adjustment counselors, and a director supervisor, uh, as well as bubbled teachers, again, not defined, or maybe not bubbled teachers, but more T-, clearly that's our priority class size. So I'm, I'm wondering that going forward, and I certainly accept the plan and appreciate the hard work that has gone into this plan. And plans are plans. Uh, so they, I'm sure are subject to change. But I, I think that it would be well worth, given that we're recommending all of these staff people, we have not seen an organizational chart in a long time. And it, I believe that it would be important to me at any rate for us to see a whole organizational chart so that we can begin to look at how much our staff has grown and where these new positions fill, fit into the entire district. Um, cause I'm, I'm losing my way in that, in that regard. So that's a recommendation. Uh, the second thing is on page three. Um, uh, just the paragraph just above evidence-based program one, there are dollar amounts attached to each of the priorities, the budget priorities that you have outlined there, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Cabral. So those numbers, how are they ascertained?
Which paragraph?
On page three.
Before, above the heading.
Paragraph above evidence-based.
Yeah, above the heading. So that, that comes from the, that comes from the workbook?
Workbook. But, okay, so how do they find their way into the workbook? I mean, well, not how do they find their way physically, but what, what do those numbers mean? I mean, they're huge sums of money. Is that?
Is the question, how did we, they, how did that, uh, how do they develop the numbers and add them all up?
A lot of, yeah. Investments for social, emotional, seven-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand, is that over three years? Is that a one-time number one expenditure that will be?
They're giving, they're allowing us, or they're giving us credit. Part of the plan isn't all about new programs. So the plan allows us to continue a lot of the work that we're already doing because a lot of the work we're doing aligns with the Student Opportunity Act. But for example, we wanna expand PK. We've already expanded PK. We can count that as part of our plan and funding that you have allocated to improve student achievement. You invested heavily, heavily in the, uh, in adjustment counselors. We can count that. That's part of that. We also invested in team chairs. That's part, that's included in that, in that number. So again, it's not new money. A lot of it is money that we have already built into our budget that we're gonna continue building into, that we're gonna continue carrying forward. Desi recognizes that we can't just continue adding, 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 that it costs money to sustain the programs we already have in place. Long answer, I hope that makes sense.
So, 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 uh, what, so what you said, I just wanna, uh, just, uh, just follow up on that, Carol. So what you're saying is that the programs that we already have in place, a lot of them align with the money from the Student Opportunity Act. And then you're supplementing it, adding to that, so everything aligns with the Student Opportunity Act, so you can get reimbursed on, under, under those lines. Is that, is that how, is that accurate to say?
Yeah, so let me give you a good example would be, let me see. So for example, if you look at the, the first workbook, if you look at the first workbook... So for example, if you look at the, the first workbook, if you look at the first workbook, that's increased personnel in services to support holistic student needs. So you'll notice in FY '20, right, we received $25,000, I know the fine is small, we received $25,000 from Bristol County Savings Bank, that's a $25,000 budget. We, we hired four team chairs, $300,000, that's FY '20. And we don't have any bridge program, we don't have any bridge program, correct? So you look over, the $25,000 next becomes 50 because Bristol County is donating another $25,000. And if we add the two kindergarten, the two, we add two more team chairs, that counts their salary plus any negotiated increase. So that's why that $300,000 goes to 465. So again, it's counter, it's factoring in increases plus the additional personnel. And then at the bottom, you see the difference. You see the 440. So that would be the additional cost, but again, some of it is grants and some of it is stuff that we're building into our budget.
So basically the 440 is coming from the Student Opportunity. Go ahead, Carol, continue on.
Did I hear you say adding two more team chairs, so we have four? Are you thinking six?
We'd like to, we'd like to continue building that because that's, that's a need that we're hearing from our schools that will allow our guidance counselors to do the work. So if I go back about a month ago, when we were in the presentation room, we kept hearing we need more SEL supports, more SEL supports. Each building is almost fully stacked, staffed with two guidance counselors. If we can take the team meetings off their case, you have two guidance counselors providing direct support to our kids.
Yeah, so this is a pretty heavy set of recommendations for new staff. So I keep hammering away a strategic plan and I, I think the next step is having this plan find its way into a strategic plan so that we can have the full picture of what our expectations are going forward in terms of improving our programs. So just my last comment, I have lots of comments, but I can sit with you later and talk about them. The paragraph above these investments are as follows, that's paragraph above it where it says, "In addition to the narrative below..."
Page?
Parenthesis, page three. It says, "To be accomplished by reallocating existing resources in addition to utilizing the increase in Chapter 70 funds."
Yeah, so what we've got, what we've anticipate, and we, again, we've done a, we have a pretty, before this all happened with Corona, Brendan and I sat down with Marguerite and we got a pretty good handle on some savings that we'll see from the Hope Well merger. We'll be able to allocate some of those resources, class size, and without impacting position. Pretty sure everyone is going to have a, going to have a position, but there may be some staffing that are extra that we can place through attrition so they have jobs in time, that'll free up money in our budget to do some of this work.
Okay, and my last comment is somewhere in this document, and previously you suggest that we are underfunded by $400,000.
Five hundred.
I'm sorry?
About 500, four to 500.
Well, the number that you have in here says 400, but 500 doesn't matter. When I look at the, so look at the spreadsheet with, and you suggested that it was less Chapter 70 funding, we're getting 400,000 to 500,000 less than Chapter 70 funding. And it was always a mystery to me because of theoretically the allocation of resources we're getting for the Student Opportunity Act. And I looked at a spreadsheet with the fiscal 19, fiscal 20, fiscal 21, Chapter 70 allocations, and I can't find the $400,000 to $500,000 less that we're getting in Chapter 78. So this would be a discussion, I'm sure, for another budget workshop or some other format. But I think that before we move forward in terms of finalizing the budget, that those questions need to be answered.
Yeah, I would say refer to the PowerPoint from our budget workshop. One of the slides compares fiscal 20, I'm sorry, fiscal 20, fiscal 19 to fiscal 20. Look at the line that is about Chapter 70. The Chapter 70 line, because there's the local contribution, then there's the Chapter 70 contribution. The Chapter 70 contribution is, yeah, I think you're right, Carol, 400,000 less. So last year, our final...
So I, yeah, I'm looking at the numbers differently than you, so I would like to sit beside you so you can say here, here, and here.
I will point it out like we went over it during the budget workshop. It's 400,000 less. It was $1 million last year, we're at 3.6. What you guys have asked me, what you guys made a motion for Brendan and I to do, Brendan and I are doing, we are building into 1.6 city contribution. So the city contribution, 1.6 plus the 3.6 comes out to 5.2. So we're building our budget to include the local and the Chapter 70 increase. That's what we talked about at the budget workshop that you directed us to do.
Yeah, and we haven't, and we haven't got the full amount in the past, but this year we want the, we're going to, we're looking for the full amount.
And remember the, remember that I showed you the peak where the city was at 108% net school spending? If they're not adding any new money, it's going to start...
It's going to start to dwindle as the years go down.
Right, because they have not contributed, because their contribution on the local side was the retiree health insurance.
Right. There's no more education money. Greg, he's got a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I hate to be the doom and gloom, but we've talked about this before, I've mentioned it before, there's no funding source for the Student Opportunity Act in place before coronavirus, after coronavirus. And although we have a great plan that the superintendent put together, and it's a very aggressive plan, like Ms. Doherty said, you know, it's a three-year plan, how do we sustain it beyond three years? And what's going to happen with our funding? Again, things happen, things have changed in the last couple of weeks, and I don't know what to say more, but you know, what's the next step? I mean, we're presenting this, the deadline's April 1st. Are they just going to say, let's put this on someone's desk and wait until we see what the actual true numbers are with sales receipts from restaurants, from the lottery, from casinos closing? I, I mean, I don't see a very positive indication that any of this money's coming our way or any of the district, this $1.5 billion anytime soon. So I think we have to have a Plan B. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Agreed, agreed that that's, that's important because we don't know this is going. And I think the superintendent's going to talk to the commissioner on a conference call. I think the April 1st deadline is going to be pushed back, but that's still to be decided. You got anything to say on that, John?
No, the only thing I'll say is, Greg, I mean, yeah, we've been thinking the same thing. I've been in contact with in southeastern Massachusetts, we've been saying the same thing because before this, it was momentum to increase the income percentage. Remember that worksheet I gave you guys that showed the 4%, when it shouldn't be 14%? It was some momentum to do some work about increasing that percentage, which were more dollars, not public schools, but you're right, with everything the way is playing out, that's one question that I plan to ask the commissioner or MASSS, is what should we expect now when we're trying to wrap up the budget? It's going to be a challenge, it's going to be challenging. Jody and Christine and Carol.
All right. Greg, are you all set?
Set for now, thank you so much.
Thank you. I got, in, in this order, it's going to be Jody Almeida, then Christine, and then Carol. Go ahead, Jody Almeida.
Thank you, David. This past week when the governor was speaking on TV, he specifically mentioned the Student Opportunity Grant monies, and he mentioned something else that had to go back to the legislature to have them approve extensions because of the fact, because of the virus. So I think that, you know, it's nice if we get this in for April 1st because we'll, we'll be in there, but I know that he did mention that all this was going to be asked to be extended. So I think we, if, and if we all listened to what the governor had to say the other day, that's, that's what he said, along with a few other items.
Yeah, that was, that was a question that I posed, Jody, on Saturday to Helen Bettencourt, who was supposed to turn these into, and she said, more guidance would be coming.
Yeah, yeah, that's what he said, so. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Jody. Christine?
Hi. Greg, I agree with what you had to say here. I'm concerned about, you know, this, this, unfortunately, this whole event with this virus is really going to change an awful lot of dynamics. One of the things I was looking at in this thing, I was just talking about having all these family get-togethers and stuff like that. I'll tell you what, if somebody was, was indicated earlier on on one of these shows, we're going to have to change drastically the way we do things in view of this virus. And there's some concerns it might peak again, and apparently now they've found people that have had it once and then they still get it again. So I, I look at stuff about family engagement stuff, but all this stuff about potluck dinners and all that, I don't, I don't know if that's even going to be possible, given what's going on now. And the other thing I'm concerned about is we target certain groups of kids, but geez, our open-ended responses show that a lot of our kids have trouble, a majority of them are having trouble answering those questions. So I don't know, I think we need to be a little bit more broad-minded about targeting everybody that has an issue, not just subgroups. So I, I, I don't know what to think of this. I, I looked over some of it and I was concerned about some of the targets, but a lot of our children are having trouble, and it doesn't matter where they come from. So we have to, I hope we don't forget that while we're doing things like this, that there's other kids that need help too.
We, we don't. We're a comprehensive high school, we try to, comprehensive school district, sorry. We try to reach out to everyone and include everyone, which you guys have done a great job at.
Thank you, Christine. Carol, a follow-up?
Yeah, just, I see this plan as dynamic, I mean, it's not, three years from now, as you, somebody pointed out, things are changing so rapidly, three years from now, some of the things that we're recommending here may not be possible to implement or may be different. So it is an ever, it's a, it will be a movable feast. I heard, I read an article in The Globe today or yesterday that the revenues that are expected because of all of the closings, the tax revenue that is expected by the government have, they're expecting to have quite a, a lower tax revenue picture coming into the state, that the governor is not presenting a budget just yet, a state budget. We're not going to know what money we're going to get from the state for some time, as you well know, John, based on your conferences. So that's the first thing. And that the legislature is being appealed to regarding these, this SOA report, that the April 1st deadline would be waived, and I think you said that as well, but that the public meeting section of it would also be waived, and other mandates that are included in the Student Opportunity Act would be waived, at least for the short term. So it's a movable feast. So I think that we can only go with our gut, make recommendations that we know that our kids are going to need next year, and as Greg pointed out, to have a Plan B in the event that our, we don't even, the picture may be even more bleak than a $400,000 or $500,000 shortfall in our Chapter 70 funds, so we need to be ready for that as well.
Thank you, Carol. Any, any more discussion on the motion? Nathan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. So I have a question, this is, this is more of a question, me being a new member, and Carol touched upon it a little bit, but what I was wondering, this is a, this is a great plan, I really like all the stuff that's in here. What I was wondering is how does this fit into our district's strategic plan overall? And, and do we have any sort of strategic plan documented somewhere that I could get a look at?
We, we have the old one, that's what, 12 years old now? So once we, this is, I don't know how this is going to sound, but once we try to get to some sense of normalcy, I do have a survey that we were ready to launch, it's ready, it's done. But I don't know how involved parents will be as far as answering the survey right now, considering what's going on. So once we try to get things into a normal, or somewhat normal routine around this virtual learning and the packs that we have going on, I, I have a survey that I'll send out, that's the final piece that's missing, so that we can start synthesizing and putting together our SWAP. So we have a new brand that I was planning to introduce when I introduced the strategic plan.
Okay, thank you.
The old copy, Nathan, but we're, we're close. I mean, we've done all the public meetings, as far as all the entry meeting and meeting with some parent groups, I want to cast a wider net. As I learned from this, from the budget surveys, we had 1,600 participants. So that's why I want to use the power of the survey, because that'll give us a lot of feedback and really show us where we need to be laser focused.
Thank you, Nathan. Thank you, Mr. Cabral. On the motion, no more, any more discussion. On the motion made by Jody Almeida and seconded by Carol. On the motion, all those in favor, say aye.
Was the motion again, I'm sorry?
Wendy, read the motion back, please.
To accept the plan presented and submitted by the Department of Education, is that correct?
Yes.
I'll say, Greg?
Yes.
On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. Thank you, everyone. The next item on the agenda, any, more unfinished business? Any more unfinished business at all, on anything? Moving on then, we're going to move on to critical items that reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance. Nathan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. I'm hoping this is the right time to do this, but I'd like to speak to something that I think is really, really great positive news for our district. So as many of you may be aware, our own curriculum supervisor for ELA at Taunton Public High Schools, Sarah Buckley, is now Dr. Buckley. So I would like to make a motion for the school committee to officially recognize and congratulate Dr. Sarah A. Buckley for successfully defending her doctoral thesis and earning her doctorate through Northeastern University this afternoon, March 18th, 2020. TPS is blessed to have Dr. Buckley as a curriculum leader and teacher. She lives her passion for literacy and lifelong learning and is an amazing role model, not only for our students, but for the teachers of TPS as well. That's my motion.
On the motion, I heard, I heard, I heard a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
On discussion, the chair has just, I've got no problem with that, I know Sarah's, Sarah is an amazing educator. We also have had teachers that have got their doctorate, I know this past year, so does the, is the normal, is this the normal routine, or does the superintendent's administration, do they recognize the doctorates and send them a little letter?
Actually, I don't believe we have, because actually recently was Cheryl Butts, Dr. Butts became her doctorate, I think she's in a similar program with Sarah over at Northeastern as well, but I don't recall in my time in central office as superintendent.
Mr. Polowski, I don't want, I don't want to slight any of the other doctorates that happened this year. I know that Ashley Shav's got her doctorate, I think this year or last year. I think one of the gals over at Bennett School, Lynch, the Lynch girl, got her doctorate this, a few months ago. So it's part of your motion, could you put that, all doctorates, and, and make this a standing practice for the administration to recognize them?
Yes, so you, you'd like me to add that to my motion? Yes, so I would like to add that we would also officially recognize and congratulate all of the other recent doctoral candidates within Taunton Public Schools and would recommend that we make this an ongoing practice of the school committee to do so in the future.
And Carol, will you second that again?
Well, that's a friendly amendment. I'll accept that.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. Critical items, I'm sorry, Carol, go ahead.
Not so critical, I should have done this under, I don't know, some other business topic.
We can still, we can still go to unfinished business.
Just to remind people that our high school, a team is on the high school quiz show on Saturday night at 6:00, I believe, on Channel 2 and WGBH.
It's this Saturday. At least we can watch that when we're quarantined to our TVs, I think.
Right, right. I, I think that it's, it's been an enormous adventure for the young people who stepped up and put this together with their teachers and that they were willing to compete and probably the first of many over the years. So I think that we should, we're able to watch and then congratulate them on a subsequent meeting. Thank you.
It makes us all do what we, it all makes us do what we do every, every time we come to, we do school committee work. It's, it's amazing. John, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Jakes, Mr. Jakes, could you and your lovely daughter please advertise the high school quiz show on social media, Channel 10, please?
Absolutely. This is Bridget chiming in.
Hey, Brid.
Hi, Bridget.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make sure I get it on social media and I will put it on, put it on TV.
Anything else under unfinished business at all? And my, Christine, I got you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just have one quick question.
Yeah, I just have one quick question, Mr. Cabral. For those kids on that trip, has any letter gone out yet to that company?
So, I actually, I received a favorable, or somewhat favorable, letter from the, from Tim, the superintendent who's leading this charge. And then I also learned that they were featured on one of the local news stations.
Channel 5.
Yeah, so I don't have the letter with me. What I will do tomorrow is, I will scan you all a copy of the letter that I received, showing the progress that's been made towards recouping funds.
Okay, thank you, Cabral.
Thank you, Christine. And I think part of that is, it was, it was on Channel 5 last night. I think it's a snowballing effect of what's happening with them, because this is countrywide with EF Tours. So, this, there's gonna be some remedy that they may have with all the pressure that's been put on them, according to what I hear in the media, but we'll have to wait and see. Thank you. Any other, any other unfinished business? Just, Nathan, go ahead. Oh, wait a minute, you're on mute. John, do you have?
I'm unmuted now, I hit the wrong button. On the EF Tours situation, are we providing any guidance to the parents of the students on the June trip? I know that we've recommended, I mean, I know that that tour is going to be canceled, but I think there was a question of whether each individual parent, student was going to communicate with EF Tours, as to what their plans were. Are we providing guidance to the individuals on what they should do as a next step?
Well, what I think would probably be a good move for us to do would be to draft a petition to the parents, letting them know the steps that you have taken as a school board, and the step that I have taken as superintendent with my groups, and letting them know this is the latest information that we received.
Okay.
Keep them abreast of what's going on. That's a good, that's a good point.
Thank you, thank you, Nathan. John, I know, I received an email, and I sent it to you today in my response to the, to the mother. And it's, she's going to wait to hear from the high school. So, my question, follow-up to Nathan, is we need to give them a point person, if it's Purperer at the high school, or if it's gonna be Mr. Barada, we need to give them a point person. If they're, all the parents, I can't use the word meet, but contact Purperer, or somebody at the high school, or Mr. Barada's office. So, they, all the information, again, in this case here, all the information flows from one person or one source.
Yeah, let me give that some thought, because I really do want Chris's focus right now on the, and I understand the Greece trip is very important.
This is, yeah, this is not as important as Chris is doing now, believe me.
It's on the education plan, on EMOC plan. And then once we get the EMOC plan running pretty smoothly and consistently, we're gonna, trust me, we're gonna start back to regular business. I would love nothing more than to be back on regular business.
Yeah, I know, I understand, I think this is, this is only important because this is time-sensitive and there's a lot of money involved. Greg, I'm gonna let Greg talk, because I see Greg's got his hand up. Go ahead, Greg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thought that at our emergency meeting of March 12th, that we had made a motion to engage legal counsel to act independently from the other 90-some-odd school districts or schools that were also seeking funds. Was that not correct?
That was.
So, what are we waiting for, the letter from this gentleman you're speaking of?
No, I received a letter, Greg, I have a letter that's showing the progress that's been made already, in addition to what we're gonna do.
Right, but I thought that on March 12th, we were, we were moving forward already with a letter from our legal counsel to EF Tours to act. I know that Attorney Fiore also mentions something about a clause that was in the, the letter from Attorney Gay. Again, like you know, it's, it's gonna be a financial burden on a company like EF Tours. I'm very familiar, and I think that the longer we wait, the more money we put in the bank. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Yeah, that's a good, good point. Any other unfinished business? Thank you, everyone. Before I get to press time, because I know the press may wanna ask a few questions, I'm just trying to find them. We're gonna meet again next, I'm planning on meeting again next Wednesday, probably earlier, if we can do the 4:30 again, and the only item, we're gonna meet every week until this Corona thing is put away, put away. I think just so everyone's on the same, everyone gets the same information at the same time, and can ask questions. We're just gonna, and we'll meet, on the regular meeting will be a full business. On the off weeks, it'll be what's going on with this. Anyone has any opinions or questions, we can, we can do it in a public set, in this set, in this setting that we have right here, and move forward like that.
What time next week, David?
Can everyone do 4:30? You wanna do it a little earlier?
4:30 is fine.
I don't see any opposition, so 4:30 next Wednesday, John and Wendy. Greg, Greg, you got a question? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to revert back to the critical items not reasonably anticipated before we adjourn. Can we request from Attorney Gay, I know that we're strained out, and Mr. Barada's stretched out and everything else, so we can get a response from the attorney by next Wednesday's meeting? The letter was sent out to EF Study Tours or not?
The problem, we're running into David on vacation, so it's gonna be Matt Costa.
Well, Superintendent Cabral, with all due respect, again, this has been ongoing since March 4th. That's when we first addressed the issue of the trips and what's going on with the coronavirus. This is escalating, as we all know. Look at the news media that's out there, the case in Massachusetts are climbing every day. We're now, March 18th, and we haven't done anything. We need to act, we can't wait for other districts to act on our behalf. We need to get something from the attorney or another, I mean, whatever, I mean, that's, that's an issue. It's a real complicated issue. We have $292,000 at risk, based on 75 people at $2,900 each.
I will reach out to David, who's on vacation. And if he's gonna handle it on vacation, he will handle it. He may refer it to Matt Costa, but I will reach out to David and let him know what we need him to do.
Yeah, see if, see if we can get it for next week.
So, that's a motion? Is that a motion that's on the floor, or?
No, I don't hear a motion yet, you can, you can make it.
I'd like to make it in the form of a motion, so we can get some response. Yes, absolutely.
So, I hear, there's a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Jody, Jody Fiore seconded. On discussion, Nathan and then Carol.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. So, I believe we have had some meetings recently. I spoke with David Purperer, because, I mean, I'm interested in this, not only as a school committee member, but as also a parent, as I've signed up my son for next year's Italy tour. So, I know that there has been a lot of, a lot of discussion. I guess I'd maybe defer to Mr. Barada. Is there any sort of a summary on what the, the situation is? Because, you know, Mr. Purperer kinda laid everything out for me on what the options would be for the parents that are currently on the, that were currently signed up for the June trip to Greece. And it sounded like there was at least some progress made since last we spoke about it. So, Mr. Barada, could you add anything to that?
While, while I searched for the email, because when I heard it was, the meeting was winding down, I saved the email, EF emailed the school district on Monday, the 16th. Off the top of my head, I can tell you that, and I'll read the text they had. They extended the deadline for June trips out to April 30th. Again, that doesn't impact the feeling and the sentiments that our school committee has, but as a jumping off point, at least they extended that out. I will try to pull up that email again, and I apologize, it's gonna take me a moment. If you wanna talk about another topic, as soon as I get this up, I will read it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. There was, while, while he's looking that up, because we can't hold for that. Go ahead, Chris, and look it up, he's still looking at it a minute. I've got Carol and then Jody Almeida.
I have it, David, I have it.
All right, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead, hold on, Jody, I mean, hold on, Carol. Go ahead, Mr. Cabral.
All right, so this is from Superintendent Tim Poiwa, who has been working with us on this. So, and again, this is being done, and will be done in addition to what we had David Gay in his firm or his office do far. So, he thought he'd send an email to the smaller group of superintendents, which is me, that I'm part of. For those who were not able to be part of the meeting yesterday, I felt that it was productive, and EF promised to come back to us by the end of the week. At the latest with an answer to provide a proposal that was raised. The current possibility is that they are looking at whether or not they can offer half refund or half voucher to all families cash back, and make them whole with the same ability to have these vouchers be transferable, although it's not, although it's obviously not a full refund, but it would be ideal. I got the impression it's something they are going to try and see that they can do. This is not information to be shared at this point, so I'm sharing it with you. Other than the timeline, because nobody wants to overpromise and underdeliver. In the meantime, in response to the listener blowing up today, I've drafted a letter, which I will forward to you. Actually, I'll forward you the letter after this meeting, you can, Jacy's daughter just popped up. I'll forward you the letter after the meeting, so you can see what was written.
Okay, Carol, go ahead.
I pass, go ahead, David.
Thank you, Jody Almeida, and then Greg.
It's fine on this issue. You know, I know we've had a lot more pressing issues other than this travel at this time. And I think that the staff has done an extraordinary job trying to keep everything calm, keeping people informed. And I think that what they're doing now is top priority. The top priority, although it's not, that it's not important, is not that trip. The top priority is get through this virus, and get our kids educated, and get us back to school. And now we can worry about the other stuff. We're just worrying about too much all at once. This is more important at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Almeida. Mr. DeMello?
Mrs. Almeida, thank you so much, but unfortunately, our families are taking a $2,900 financial hit if they have one student or more than one student on this trip, losing jobs, not, not getting paid. Most of them, some of them are in the waitstaff business. I've had people reach out to me, I mean, I've had people reach out to me with a concern. And my, my major concern is that by them allowing an additional extension of time to April 30th, it's just them, I hate to use this, but kicking the can down the road. We cannot wait any longer, a half 50% in money, 50% in voucher, I don't think is the way we should, we should go. Again, a full demand of money, any deposits back to the students and their families, I think is due diligence on our part to protect the interests, since Taunton Public Schools is part of this. If Taunton Public Schools wasn't part of this, maybe it wouldn't be a priority, Mrs. Almeida. But unfortunately, $2,900 to many of our families in Taunton is a big, big financial hit. And again, the motion is on the floor. Thank you.
A motion has been made by Mr. DeMello and seconded by Ms. Doherty. On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
One opposition, Wendy?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Any more business unfinished, or business at all? Thank you, everyone. Press time. There's going to be no press time this evening. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the official meeting. I hear a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jody Fiore. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes, anybody opposed? The ayes have it.